Call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, can we please start with a roll call?
Uh, Council President Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McGurven.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Member Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Albersen. Member Van.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. We're gonna start off tonight with a couple of proclamations. The first one is Safe Boating and Paddling Week. Uh, with the weekend we had, it's kind of appropriate.
Right. Proclamation, whereas the city of Renton is bounded by Lake Washington shoreline and encompasses numerous waterways, and whereas many Renton residents of all ages engage in recreational boating and paddling, and whereas with the surge of Americans engaging in paddling activities since 2020, many without any training, paddling fatalities now constitute more than 25% of all boating fatalities nationwide, and whereas the vast majority of serious boating and paddling accidents are caused by lack of training, human error, or poor judgment, and whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets, and whereas the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Renton Flotilla 1300205 is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching boating safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks, now therefore I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May 18th, uh, through, uh, May 18th through 24, 2024, to be Safe Boating and Paddling Week in the City of Renton, and I hereby encourage all of Renton resident, uh, to dedicate themselves to learning about and practicing safe boating, including wearing life jackets, and witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2024. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albersen, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carried. And tonight to accept the proclamation, we have Deborah Alderman, U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Flot- Flotilla. Deborah, would you like to say a few words here?
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much again for supporting the work, um, that we do in promoting recreational boating safety. It's something near and dear to our heart, and we really appreciate it. And, uh, and we changed up the proclamation this year to really emphasize paddling safety because, as you read, it's a pretty serious problem, and, um, it looks so easy. So we're really trying to get the word out to help people realize the importance of wearing life jackets and, um, getting knowledgeable before they get out on the water. So thank you for, for doing that with us, and we're always looking forward to opportunities to partner with cities like Renton to, um, get the word out and train more people. So thank you very much, and, um, we did bring some life jackets for, um, some photo opportunities if you would like to do that with us, so.
Perfect.
So thanks very much, and I know you have other things on the agenda, so.
Yep.
And I did want to just introduce our, um, auxiliary members. That's our flotilla commander, Moti Krauthammer, and, uh, our division vice commander, and a guest of ours who's thinking about joining the auxiliary, so thanks for having us this evening.
Great. Thank you very much for being here. Well, we have a river and a lake in the middle of our city, so boating safety and water safety is important. So we're gonna take a couple of pictures if you guys will come up to the front here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Everybody.
Yes. Every life.
Everybody in a life jacket.
No, it's a plane.
Oh, it's a plane. I forgot it's a plane. Take it one side. Just for the photo, right? It's in.
Yeah. You gotta wear it on me.
That is not. Play along, play along. Now we have a nice view of the floor.
Oh, no, dude.
One more, sir. Oh, yeah, I can, I gotta read this one.
That was fun. Props. Okay, next is, um, let's see here, we have National Public Works Week.
Okay. Proclamation, whereas public works professionals focus on the services and infrastructure that are vital importance to a sustainable and resilient community, public health, a high quality of life, and the well-being of the people of Renton, and whereas such services and infrastructure could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, airport professionals, managers, water, wastewater, and traffic signal technicians, construction professionals, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, maintaining, improving, operating, and protecting our city's mobility networks, water, wastewater, and surface water utilities, solid waste systems, our airport, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents, and whereas it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children of Renton to gain knowledge of and maintain an active interest and understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in our community, and whereas 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, connecting the world through public works, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, whose theme challenges our residents and employees to think about the role public works plays in creating a great place to live, work, and play, now therefore I, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25, 2024, to be National Public Works Week in the City of Renton, and I encourage all residents to recognize the contributions public works professionals make every day to protect our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, and witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 13th day of May, 2024. Signed, Armando Pavoni, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albersen, that the proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries. And here to accept, uh, the proclamation tonight is our own Martin Pastusia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, on behalf of the 200 professional employees in the Renton Public Works Department, we thank you for this proclamation and acknowledgement of their efforts day in and day out to make Renton a great place to live, work, play, and thrive. And while we're all sad that it's the end of City Clerk Week, we all, you know, are happy with the fact that it's moving into public works.
He stole my joke.
Next, I'm gonna need.
Yeah.
I, I'm gonna take a, um, a note from the Coast Guard folks and then bring out props next year. I should brought the vest.
You don't have any vests? They call me. Traffic cones?
Sounds like a whole thing, so.
Well, we're gonna take a picture before we do so, we have to say that it is really amazing the work that we do here in the City of Renton and, uh, the effort that the public works team puts together to, um, provide us a, an amazing place to live, so, thank you. We're gonna take a picture now.
It wants, wants it, Jason, he comes back.
That's my card. It's, yeah, I know.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we are on to the administrative report.
Alright, good evening, everyone. The Equity Commission will meet on Tuesday, May 14th at 5:30 PM. On their agenda is an overview of the city's budgeting process. The Mayor's Inclusion Task Force will also be meeting on Thursday, May 16th at 5:00 PM. Both groups will be introduced to our new Community Outreach Coordinator, Casey King. For more information, please go to rentonlaw.gov. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Alright, thank you. Next up is the, uh, audience comment period, and we do have a few people signed up. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the councils as a whole. If a response is requested, please provide your name and address, including email. Um, each speaker will be given three minutes. There's a timer in front of you. When the little buzzer turns to yellow, you, um, please wrap, start wrapping up your comments. And first, uh, up tonight is Paul Quinn.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Paul Quinn. I live in Somamish. I'm speaking to you as an individual that cares about recycling and composting and reducing what we send to the landfill. Let's start with that reminder you've heard me say that King County surveys showed that trash sent to the landfill, two-thirds of that is actually, can be recycled or composted. So two-thirds of our trash is actually not trash. I emailed you three handouts, and before I start with those, when I speak of diversion rates, it means the percent of disposed tonnage diverted away from the landfill and to recycling and food scraps composting. The first handout, this one, in table three, you see our diversion rate is flat for the first quarter in Renton versus year ago, the same quarter. And as important, in the top right, is a graphic that shows Renton's diversion rate has only gotten worse since 2021. The city needs a new approach to improve diversion, and tonight, I have a proposal to do just that. King County is offering grants right now for innovative recycling and composting projects. I provided you with a handout for a grant proposal to provide smart disposal to the City of Renton. I need a city to partner with to apply for this grant with me, and then we can provide single-family residents with direct personal feedback and education based on their own disposal habits. Let me tell you what smart disposal is. Smart disposal weighs each container emptied by the hauler for each single-family home. This system, through a postcard, emailed, not emailed, mailed to each resident, provides data specific to their address, including a landfill diversion rate per pickup and trend line over time, and I provided you an example. This system helps us move from a toss-and-forget mindset toward making better choices. We all know that feedback through measurement works because our water, electricity, and gas, they're all metered, helping us to moderate our use. Smart disposal effectively meters our actual use of the disposal utility. During the pilot, the city will bear no cost, as the grant request covers all costs to conduct the pilot. The City of Renton and its hauler will be partners on this project. I provided the completed grant application as a handout, and all I need is a city to agree to be my partner. This grant partnership request has urgency, as the King County grant application must be submitted by May 29th. People in the City of Renton want to live sustainability. You have a terrific sustainability plan. This, residents need tools and the leadership of the council to help them increase their rate of recycling and composting. Join me in smart disposal, and let's get our diversion rate moving in the right direction.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Tom Anderson.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to thank you that you've given your, uh, city attorneys, uh, some authority to meet with me. So we're planning a meeting on the 23rd to discuss the lease, and I've got great public support. Uh, the Renton Reporter did a really nice article. I don't know if you folks saw it, but, uh, anyway, I just wanted to thank you all for professional, uh, and the courtesy that you've offered us. Thank you again.
Thank you. And next up is Sergio Nunez.
Hello, Sergio Nunez, and I play for Laren Girl. Oh, yes, that's okay, they can ask you one question, guys. It's okay? Cause I know you listen to me, but you never answer any question. Can I answer just one? You know, what are we doing for aviation? This help everybody. And thank you for the opportunity to, you guys give it my best to get together in the table, and I just hope you keep in mind, we help the community. We don't do nothing wrong with that. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And next up is Sophia Farret.
Hello, City Council, hello, Mayor, thank you. Um, my name is Sophia Farret, yeah. Um, this is my fourth time coming here. Uh, maybe you guys are tired, tired of seeing us here. We probably sound like a tape recorder at this time. So, well, uh, I'm not here to annoy you or anything like that. Um, I'm here to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity they gave us to schedule a meeting with your lawyer and with my, with, uh, our boss. And, um, well, I have been praying for you, um, me praying to the Lord Jesus Christ, so he can touch your heart and, uh, so you can, guys, help us and give you the wisdom to, uh, take a decision, the great decision, um, that you won't regret, and God knows your heart, and I just want to say this, a quick verse, um, Jeremiah 17:10. The Lord says, "I, the Lord, search the heart and examine the mind, to give each person according to his ways, according to the foot of his deeds." So I'm a person who loves God and have a relationship with him because of who he is, not what, what he can give me, and, uh, I also, uh, sorry about that. Uh, and I just want to let you know that, um, I, I love God, and I love my job. I love the City of Renton, and I'm so, I'm very thankful, thankful with you, uh, for giving us this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. And, uh, next up is Derek Anderson.
Hello, Mayor, rest of the City Council. I appreciate you hearing us tonight again, and, uh, I'm happy to see that the, uh, plague of mismanagement over the airport has, uh, started to subside, and that, uh, we are looking forward to, to working with the future of development in the city, and I would also really urge the City Council to, to continue to look into how things are run at the airport and, uh, really, uh, see that there is, uh, a bright future for, for all of us there if we work together. Um, the Renton, um, City Airport Advisory Committee is, uh, really important, I think, to, uh, to sustain all of the ongoing, uh, collaboration with everybody on the airport and not just some of the, the bigger players. Uh, we're, we're a, a small family business, and so we really appreciate having, uh, the, the ears and, uh, support of the community. So, uh, randycorman.com is always a good source of information as well. Just, um, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have for people signed up tonight. We are on to the consent agenda. There are five items for councils' consideration. Are there any that you would like pulled for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council President.
Seeing none, I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albersen, that the council approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries. We are on to unfinished business. Council President Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
I will present the Finance Committee reports on behalf of Councilmember Halloran. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, none for you, then we'll go on to Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Albersen.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, the Community Services Committee has one report to present.
Hey, Community Services Committee, committee report, the Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointments, and Mr. Duffy Dugato, term expiring, uh, 12/31/2024, Mr. Jake, uh, here, term expiring 12/31/2025, and Ms. Carol Affleck, uh, youth position, term expiring 12/31/2026, to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. This is signed by the Chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Albersen.
I move that, uh, council concur with the recommendation of the Community Services Committee.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Albersen, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Community Service Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppo- oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries. Councilmember Van.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has six reports to present.
Hey, Finance Committee, committee report, uh, the first is regarding approval of claims of payroll vouchers. Finance Committee approves the following payments, accounts payable total payment of $6,209,448.83 for a number of vouchers, including payroll benefit withholding vouchers and one wire transfer, and two is payroll total payment of $1,938,941.27 for payroll vouchers that include 663 direct deposits and five checks. This is the April 1st through 15th pay period. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
It's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment request for the, uh, Antioch Presbyterian Church. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account 009062-000, Antioch Presbyterian Church, located at 1701 Northeast 43rd Street, in the amount of $9,573.69 for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with RMC, Renton Municipal Code 8446 and 8523. Uh, this is signed by the Vice Chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding, uh, utility bill leak adjustment for property at 1170 Sunset Boulevard North. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to customer account 025787-000, requested by the property owner of 1170 Sunset Boulevard North, in the amount of $4,645.55 for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code 8523. This too is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding an agreement with Timmons Group Incorporated for an asset management plan for public works in the Parks and Rec Departments. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement with Timmons Group Incorporated in the amount of $153,540 for the development of asset management plans for the Public Works Department and the Parks and Recreation Department. This too is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
And the next report is regarding a memorandum of understanding with ASME Local 217, uh, 2170 for Language Interpreter Services. Uh, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and ASME 2170 to reactivate a payment and establish new terms, uh, for Language Interpreter Services. The new MOU will be effective beginning the pay period, May 16th to 31, uh, 2024. This is signed by the committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries.
At the final, Finance Committee, committee report is regarding a memorandum of understanding with the Seattle Police Department for the Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Task Force. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the MOU with Seattle Police Department and to approve funds in the amount of no more than $10,000 to support the Renton, uh, Police Department's ICAC overtime, travel, training, equipment, and software necessary for ICAC investigations. This too is signed by the, uh, committee vice chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee, committee report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember McGurven, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, the Plan and Development Committee has also one report to present.
Hey, Planning Development Committee, committee report, appointment to the Planning Commission. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Pavoni's appointment of Andre Arts to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term expiring 1/31/2026. This is signed by the Chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee, committee report.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albersen, that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries. And that's through the list. So we're on to legislation now. We have one ordinance for first reading.
And this ordinance is regarding, uh, the, uh, density bonus review, which is a docket item D228, and, uh, an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 48120C, 48120D4, 48120D12, amending section 49065, and amending section 411010 of the Renton Municipal Code, amending density bonus regulations, authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, seconded by Councilmember Albersen, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Alright, motion carries. We are on to new business. Council, uh, President Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, May 20th, 2024, the committee whole will be meeting at 5:45 PM in the conferencing center. We have one item on the agenda, Parks and Recreation Partnerships with the Renton School District, and then at 7:00 PM, uh, that, later on that night, uh, we'll be meeting for the council meeting here in chambers and by video conference, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On, uh, Monday, May 20th at 5:00 PM in the council conference room and via video conference, the Transportation Committee will convene. Uh, there's one item on the agenda, and that is appointment, appointments to the Renton Airport Advisor Committee, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember O'Halloran.
I have no new business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Alright, Councilmember Rivera.
I also have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Albersen. Councilmember Van.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Utilities Committee has.
The Utilities Committee has a meeting on Monday, May 20th, at 4:15 PM. The location is in the council conference room or video conference. We have one issue, one topic on the agenda. It is emerging issues in utilities, 2024 CIP construction projects update.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Perez.
No, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, what is the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Prince, second by Councilmember Albertson, and we adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody who wants to stay, say no. We're adjourned. Thank you.